This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Brother, we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible. We are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
It is. All right, it's six o'clock, and I will call our city council meeting from Monday, May 20th, 2024 to order. We'll begin with an opening prayer offered by Brother Gary Barkley from Episcopal Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Brother Gary?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you and we praise you and we thank you for this day. We pray, Lord, that you would just be with this city. Father, we invoke your blessing and your good favor. Lord, it doesn't come by accident. We pray that you would just be with these who are serving you as they serve us. God be with these council members. Be with these workers that are here to give reports. God be with these dear citizens who have come to observe and participate. Father, we just pray that you'll just bless this time. Use it for your good. Bless these people, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Gary. And now with City Clerk, read the roll call of council members.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we will entertain visitors who would like to speak. Let me remind everyone that this time is reserved for public comment addressed to the city council, and each speaker is limited to five minutes. Any agenda item which has a public hearing should be reserved until the public hearing is opened, and comments on such item will be taken at that time. If you would like to speak to the council at this time, please step to the podium. And if you have already signed in, state your name, your address, and your reason for speaking tonight.
Can I speak on the zoning and the tractage?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Janet Aldrich, and I'm Jerry Woods's daughter. And he has passed away, but Jerry and Kendall, his brother, who have both gone, were owners of the property. So I currently own his interest, and then my Aunt Shirley Woods is still alive, and my mom Barbara Bluebaugh. And so I'm here to represent them and maybe answer some questions. I did watch the planning and zoning meeting from a couple of weeks ago. And I serve on the Ray County Planning and Zoning Board, so I'm kind of aware of how those meetings go and stuff. So I just thought maybe I could help with some of the comments about it that maybe kind of got a little off track. So one of the things I did want you to know is that that property does already have a retention pond on it. It was built on there when my dad used it for a construction yard for a few years. I believe they've owned it since 1984, I think. And I don't remember how many years he used it, but anyway, it does have a retention pond on it. And it was zoned residential before that. And I just thought it lends itself more to being the residential. And because we have a narrow driveway going into it, it really doesn't lead itself to being commercial because of the turn-in part. So anyway, I was just hoping maybe that... I know that your planning and zoning... Or your... What was it? The economic... The Community Development Department recommended that it would fit back into a residential. And so I was hoping maybe that you could reconsider that a little bit. And maybe we're kind of at a little loss because every time we try to sell it as a commercial property, it doesn't really fit into anything. And we've had numerous people approach us about it. And it just seems like we just keep hitting the roadblocks and stuff. So since it was residential, we kind of thought maybe it would maybe work for Eden Village or some other housing thing up in that area. So anyway, I appreciate your time, and I was just hoping maybe you would rethink about that a little bit. And if you had any questions for me about it, I'd be glad to answer them, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Janet. Good evening. Do we have anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Kelly Anderson, and I represent Eden Village. I just wanted to point out some developments since the rezoning meeting. We did appreciate the Community Development Department letting us know what properties they identified as R3 and R4. But of those three properties, one of them sold years prior. It's actually the first property that we looked at. It was under contingent contract, and it sold. Of the other two properties, neither one of them is for sale. We did reach out to the owners of one of them to see if they would be willing to sell it, and we have not received any contact back from them. The other parcel, we don't even... There doesn't seem to be a way to get ahold of that person on Clay County Parcel Search. The name gives that address, and that has a vacant house on it. So there's no mail going to that address. There's no phone number available. We have tried. I just want to assure you that we did do a diligent land search with our Realtor, and we're not able to find appropriately zoned land, and so that didn't just sell. Also, the property that a citizen mentioned on Jesse James Road by Anytime Fitness, we also looked into that property years prior. It was under contract. It sold with the little house that sits there. It's all one parcel. So we did look for land that was zoned appropriately. This land that we identified appeared to be the best available land that we could find. It is in a neighborhood that is primarily zoned R4, and previously it was zoned R4. So we do appreciate the help, but as we've tried to look at those properties, there are no properties available, and the motion that was made was based on properties being available. So we would appreciate your reconsideration of that rezoning. And again, just want to remind you that we would be meeting a need of affordable housing that has been identified in the city's Own Thrive survey for two years in a row. And we really would like to partner with you to provide that. So we'd appreciate your consideration. And answering questions if you have any.
I did have a question. I know you were kind enough to send a letter. And one of the bullet points... I was trying to find the actual letter, but I'm sure you have a copy of it. In reference that the staff recommendation had changed. And I was unclear what you meant by that, because I was at the meeting. I wasn't at the first meeting, but I did read the information. And I did not see a change in the actual staff recommendation.
We received a staff report for the March 25th meeting, and it did say staff recommends approval of the rezoning. And I can give you a copy of that letter if you'd like it. It's in the packet.
Yeah, and I've seen that.
The second one kind of says that you... The commission may find that this fits within the community. It was kind of neutral. And I guess our question was...
Mr. Hermes, but Mr. Hermes, I believe that night you ended your presentation with the recommendation.
He did. I think we were just...
So I was unclear what your point was.
Well, the content of the letter changed significantly, and we just weren't sure why. We had one for the March hearing, and it changed so significantly for the April hearing. It added quite a bit of information about the commercial land, that sort of thing. If you look at it, it's quite a bit different in length. We just didn't understand why. It was different because as everything was tabled, we assumed it would just carry on. That was our question.
Anything else? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Okay. At this time, we will move to approve the minutes from two council meetings. One special city council meeting in May 3rd, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to do so.
Move to approve minutes of special council meeting in May 3rd, 2024. Second?
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from the special city council meeting of May 3rd? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, and now the minutes from the regular city council meeting of May 6th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 6th, 2024.
Second?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of May 6th? Hearing none. All in favor of approving these minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, and now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda that is before you. Not everyone at once.
I move that we approve the agenda for our May 20th, 2024.
Thank you, council.
Second?
Okay. Roll call, Janet?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. The agenda is approved. The first item on the agenda tonight is the proclamation for Mental Health Month, and we are going to file that away because we did not have a representative from the mental health professional community to receive that. Of course, I would volunteer to receive that, but anyway. So that'll be on file in Molly's office, and if you would like to take a look at that, you can stop into her office and see that. Number two on the agenda is the presentation of our Parks and Rec 2023 Annual Report. Our Parks and Rec slash Community Center Director Nate Williams will present this presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I didn't realize it's such a big crowd for Parks and Rec Annual Report, but here we go.
You gotta live in that world, would you?
Yeah, yeah. Exciting stuff going on. So the... Do you want to slide down? So the first page, and there's your by-the-numbers. So that is just a quick summary of what all happened in 2023. We'll get into more of the detailed numbers later, but facility reservations, 74 external reservations, which would be like your picnic shelters, your Pyron Ballpark, things like that, that are external groups from Parks and Rec Department. 225 internal. That number is typically high because we block off picnic shelters to do any renovations. So if we're repainting a picnic shelter, we close it down, and it's under us. We close it down for like fireworks and things like that. So we close down the whole Silent Mountain Park for any time that there's fireworks, just so that people don't go up there. So that is the reasoning for that number being a little bit higher with the internal use. And then 202 RH, that is Rocky Hollow. So... Which is pretty much all external groups. Soccer teams, baseball teams, softball teams that aren't playing with Excelsior Parks and Rec, but using that facility. Rocky Hollow is controlled by Clay County Parks Department, but they... With our agreement, they give us the scheduling ability, and we maintain the infield. So figured I should include that this year for you all. Programs, so that is our sports program number, so 802 participants. And then camps and other programs, 650 participants, which the other programs would be more like your Art in the Park, Storytime in the Park, things like that that are going on in the park system and not at the community center. Projects and accomplishments, so we have Powell Lake. So with the Community Center Phase 2 project, we also did a lot of work to Powell Lake. I'm judging it out, and our parks maintenance crew went in and took it a step further because that's just how awesome they are. And they put all the rock riprap around the edges to kind of clean up a lot of that. The maintenance building, a new maintenance building for them. So I guess they deserved it since they did the work on Powell Lake. Public art, so we added another public art installment, which is all internal use. And then the Regent Park pickleball courts. So if you remember, we took the one tennis court, changed it into three pickleball courts, and then repainted and put in that splash of Carolina Tar Heels on there for us. Special events, so we did... So with the Community Center really hosts a lot of the big special events for the department, but just through the Parks and Rec Department piece. There were three special events and 120 participants at those. And then the large events that would kind of go back to that would be Candy Cane Hunt, movies in the park down at Carolyn Shutey Pocket Park, and then Parks and Rec Month activities. So the month of July is Parks and Rec Month, and we try to jam-pack as much as we can into that one month as humanly possible for our staff, so. So this next page is your comparison of just year to year. So you see the COVID year that we are one year off of dropping that off of here, and we don't have to look at it again. That was a rough year, and then it's just been kind of a build-up from that. As the board has kind of discussed, when you look at traditional sports, they're kind of on a decline. Some of that is due to specialization, which is not beneficial for recreational-level leagues. That's where a child... Essentially, a parent puts a child into a program, and then you're all basketball all year long, or all soccer all year long. So that doesn't give that child the ability to play multiple sports, which is what a Parks and Rec level activity is designed for. Kind of giving a lot of kids a taste of a lot of different programs. So with that change, we've started looking for 2024. Will be more camps instead of the league format. So how can we get as many participants that could be recreational players all the way through the competitive-level players all in with us and bringing in good instructors for those? So that could be a professional soccer player that we have connections with or collegiate-level baseball players, things like that, to try to pull those athletes back into us, and then hope that maybe the younger siblings coming up will jump into the Parks and Rec. So sports up toward the top, and then we move into the events down toward the bottom. Youth Fishing Day. We had a pretty good... You know, 2022, we had a pretty good turnout, and then the Powell Lake was closed in 2023 for the renovations. So we did not get to do that activity. So the next page is our adult programs and sports. Adult sports in Excelsior Springs really struggle, as you can see. It's a lot easier to go get a lot more competition in neighboring towns of Liberty or Lee Summit or Blue Springs. Teams want to go where the competition is. You don't want to continue to beat up on the same three teams every week if you're at the top, and you don't want to get beat up by the same team if you're on the bottom. So when you have four or five teams, that becomes the ongoing struggle there. Let's see, Earth Day Cleanup, that has been a great event for us year after year, bringing in volunteers and students to help out. And then the bottom portion of that adult programs is the seniors. Even though the senior center is not under the Parks and Rec Department anymore, but the Community Center, I still want to include those numbers because they are still active with our programs. And then I wanted to list, since we are combined with the Community Center in a lot of our activities, there's so much overlap. I wanted to include some of the impressive numbers. So Senior Lunch just shows how impactful our senior center is. Over 13,000 meals served in 2023, up from 9,000. So that is a very large increase. Jeff Barge has done some pretty amazing things with that area, and a lot more to come. And then our fitness programs and youth and family programs and events. So again, those are things that the Parks and Rec Department used to run. And then when the Community Center got built and we kind of joined forces, a lot of those came under the Community Center umbrella. So I still wanted to include those so you could see what they look like, but know that they're not part of the actual Parks and Rec Department budget. And the Senior Summer Cookout, Jeff really enjoys doing that. It's part of Parks and Rec Month, to kind of close out Parks and Rec Month. He does a big cookout. Senior citizens that live in kind of your more multi-people... You know, in one building, they don't get barbecue grills. So he grills out a bunch of hot dogs, and they flock in. So 103 seniors on cookout day. And then they're asking if we have extra hot dogs at the end of it because they want to take them home. Just the taste of a grilled hot dog is so much better than microwave or anything else. So the next slide is summary of the Earth Day Cleanup from 2023. That is kind of hard to see, but again, the total numbers of volunteers were on that previous page. Where's that first text gone? But 55 large trash bags, the 55-gallon trash bags were picked up, 20 mesh river bags, three tires, and 10 truckloads of junk, bulky items. That could be anything from mattresses to recliners to who knows what. Barbecue grills, everything else. So that is picked up out of the parks, out of alleyways, out of the fishing river and dry fork. So pretty good turnout for us. Then the next page here is the condition of the budget. So the top portion is what we would have went over last year in this report. And then the bottom portion of that is from the 2023 year, 2022 to 2023. So scroll down a little bit more. There you go. So the blue numbers are, I guess, are unaudited numbers, but that is what we're looking like to end. So as discussed in years past, we dropped that number down, and then we build it back up, and we kind of sit on it for a couple of years to be able to do bigger projects. So like right now, it's getting built up to be able to do the parking lot at the Milwaukee Street Park. So we have to build a... Just with our small budget and the cost of construction, we have to take a couple, three, four years sometimes. So the Splash Park was kind of that last big one. And then the maintenance building, so it just kind of ebbs and flows for our little budget there. And then park renovations. So East Valley Trail was something that was done more over the winter, but we resurfaced that, and we just did it in-house instead of paying a company to come out. So Public Works was able to loan us a small trail-sized equipment to be able to do that. But through that park, the trees are beautiful. It's shaded. It's a really nice walk. But the trees are also causing the harm to the trail because the roots are going underneath, and it's just... Then we turn into chunks and waves and stuff. So we tried to level that out and remove any hazard areas. So it looks much better now. And then the Powell Lake renovation, as we discussed. And that was... 500,000 of that was from Clay County ARPA funds for the Phase 2 project that we were able to do that. And then the statue donations from the Shimwells. So they donated statues. The one in the picture there is at the Community Center. So it's... The geese are flying off the tree. The kid's trying to grab them, and they're flying to Powell Lake. Is why we positioned that way. We've had a lot of questions about that at the center. So that is why they're flying that way, is toward the water.
Do they fly back the other direction?
Yeah, yeah. So we gotta... I mean, it's real tough, but we gotta rotate that thing around every couple of years. And then the Turtle over, which that's been a pretty popular spot for a lot of pictures recently, is the Turtle over at Century Park. And then this next page is our 2023 project updates. So Silent Springs Park, we are finishing up. We just have signage left for that. But the McElwee family, so when Earl passed away, he left the church, and the parking lot and the playground were all one piece, and we got that split. And the McElwee children then donated the park piece to the Parks and Rec Department. And we got the equipment that is at that park donated from Lewis. So before they demoed everything and took it all to the ground, we were able to go in and clean out what was salvageable, kind of repaint some stuff, put some new bolts and things like that in to make it safe. And then the McElwee family is actually planning to reimburse us for our expenses for what we have spent, because we had to do... Get like the playground borders and grass seed and dirt and the playground mulch, things like that. So at the end of the day, it should not cost us anything. So a great, great example of a good partnership right there. And then with the McElwee family, again, the Milwaukee Street Park space. So Kim and Gary Sanson donated this a few years back, and we've been able to clean up a lot of the underbrush and trees and fence lines and get ready for the park. So in 2023, they poured a little walking trail. It's about eighth of a mile around a little loop trail. And we're gonna plant pollinators and, you know, make it a butterfly haven through there. So hence the picture. They took some rock and made a big butterfly through. So we'll walk through, and they'll plant each side identical, so it looks like a real butterfly when it's all in bloom, but pretty excited for that project. We'll be writing a grant for the playground piece of that this fall. And then the Regent Park is the art installation. So the minion that... So that minion, when we posted, that actually got more traffic on our social media than the Splash Park opening, than any other post that we have made. The minion was the popular thing. So that was just one modification of that part. Since then, we've done the basketball court, repainted it, and cleaned it up a lot, and the pickleball courts. And we added one small piece to the skate park, surveyed the skaters, and got a piece installed that they like. So and then the last page is just our social media update. So happy to answer any questions.
Nate, I noticed a difference in 2022 and 2023, the senior transportation one-way trips dipped by, you know, a couple hundred. Can you explain that? I mean, or do you have an idea of why that happened? Because I don't think we've changed our transportation at all.
Mm-mm. I mean, that could just be as simple as they're hitching rides, they're getting rides from friends or whatever to come to the center, because that's just through the city transportation that's coming to the center. So they could be having kids, I mean, we have some that the kids come work out, which are older adults naturally, but they're coming to work out or do a class, and they bring their parents to have lunch and play, you know, do crafts or play wee bowling or whatever while they get a workout in.
I have to check with my mom, I know she gives quite a few rides.
Yeah, there you go, that might be the dip in two hundred, yeah. Just driving around the neighborhoods, looking.
Okay.
Not a question, but I would just say our parks are the gemstone of our community, regardless of where you go. It just, kudos to you and your team.
Well, that's the Parks Maintenance Crew is amazing. Yeah, they, and we've been fortunate to, I mean, turnover all over the place to have, you know, Chad Clevinger, Scott Sappin, Jeff Anderson, Sharon Samso, Roger Pearson have been with us for years. I mean, that's, they take a lot of pride in the parks, and I don't have to even hardly say anything to them, they just do a lot better than what I would tell them to do, so.
They are beautiful.
I'd like to make a comment. Regent Park, it's always busy. I drive by there numerous times. I think it's the most busiest park in Excelsior Springs.
You take your skateboard out there with you when you go?
There's skateboards, there's kids playing basketball, there's adults playing pickleball all the time. Even late at, I've seen them in the evening.
Yeah.
With their headlights on.
With their headwinds.
I saw some folks playing pickleball with a basketball the other day, that was interesting.
It's one way to do it, yeah.
Hey Nate, I'm a little bit biased, of course.
Yeah, served on the board for years.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. I don't know if you have records to go back that far. But the condition of the parks now are probably as good, no, I can't say it, they're better than they've ever been.
They are better.
Yeah, and they look really good, and it's very much appreciated, because when you start talking to people that come into town to live here, that's usually one of the things that comes up in the conversation is that a town this size has that many parks? You know, and I know the goal is to have it so you're within 10 minutes of walking to a park, which means you're gonna have to have a lot of parks. And the way they kept up, and, you know, having visit with the folks that actually do that work on occasion, they are dedicated to it, and it's very much appreciated as well. If you'd pass that on, please.
You and your crew do a great job.
Crew does a great job.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any questions for Nate?
You must be the one that's in charge of the pool temperature.
You know, I keep telling you, you just gotta pee in it more.
All right, thank you, Nate. Item number three on the agenda is consideration of liquor license for Firefly Events, approval of liquor license application for Firefly Events. Our liquor control officer, also our fantastic Chief of Police Greg Dahl will present the details of this to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the nice compliment. Before you is consideration of liquor license for a new business known as Firefly Events located at 101 Spring Street. Paradise Playhouse used to operate at that location, and they previously involved a liquor license, so an application or petition for liquor license is not needed. Mr. Love has submitted the application, along with his Missouri State Liquor License, a criminal background check that was completed by Missouri Highway Patrol, and a Missouri tax certificate letter. This application has been reviewed, and I am recommending to you to favorable consideration for approval. The consideration would be for the remainder of the 23-24 year, which ends June 30th, and then a renewal license for the 24-25 year beginning July 1st. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Hearing no questions, we have a motion before us to approve the application for retail liquor licenses and renewal of liquor license for Firefly Events located at 101 Spring Street. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sphere?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Liquor license is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Item number four on the agenda is consideration of rezoning 1112 Tracy Avenue from C3 Service Business District to R4 Medium Density Residential District, ordinance number 24-05-06, and Doug Hermes, our planning consultant, will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an application proposing to rezone property at 1112 Tracy from its current zoning as C3 Service Business District to R4 Medium Density Residential District. The purpose of the rezoning is for the applicant to propose an Eden Village Planned Gated Duplex Community, offering a living environment for those who have been classified as chronically homeless and disabled. The Planning Commission considered, with any rezoning request, consider conformance with the comprehensive plan, and in this case, looking at the future land use map, the land use policies and housing policies of the city, as well as identified corridor development for potential larger mixed-use types development, type development in particular targeted areas of the community. The Planning Commission also considers, with any rezoning application, the impact on surrounding properties, looking at any of the potential uses that could be permitted in a zoning district. And the Planning Commission looks at the ability of city public infrastructure to provide the necessary services to support any of the type of permitted uses that would be allowed in a new zoning district. The Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the request. It was well-attended, both in person and virtually, and some great participation, both in favor of the application and in opposition, or with concerns for the application. In the end, your Planning Commission concluded that the application did not conform to the comprehensive plan for the city, and they voted four to one to recommend denial of the application. So your Planning Commission is recommending that the ordinance for consideration this evening not be approved. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Doug?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let me get back to the other, oop. Hold on, I lost my screen. There we go. Okay, before us is ordinance number 24-05-06, because this is an ordinance that will require two readings. The ordinance reads as such, "An ordinance authorizing and adopting the rezoning of certain property generally located at 1112 Tracy Avenue in Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri, from District C3 Service Business District to District R4 Medium Density Residential District." I need an ordinance to take this to, or I need a motion to take this to second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance number 24-05-06, consideration of rezoning of 1112 Tracy Avenue from C3 Service Business District to R4 Medium Density Residential District to second reading.
Thank you, councilman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sphere?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Okay, and as I mentioned, this is an ordinance, so we will reread the ordinance before we vote on approval. An ordinance authorizing and adopting the rezoning of certain property generally located at 1112 Tracy Avenue in Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri, from District C3 Service Business District to District R4 Medium Density Residential District. This is ordinance number 24-05-06.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance 24-05-06, consideration of rezoning of 1112 Tracy Avenue from C3 Service Business District to R4 Medium Density Residential District.
Do we have a second? I need a second to move this forward. Hearing none, the ordinance dies for lack of a second. So we will move to the next addenda item. Consideration of amendment to Chapter 403 signed regulations, ordinance number 24-05-07. And again, Doug Hermes, our planning consultant, will read the details of this ordinance to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This application represents what we believe is the final step in the city's almost two-year code review process, to take a look at the city's code, development code standards, and primarily focus on updating, correcting, fixing some ambiguities, some outdated sections, and so on. There have been a few cases where your Planning Commission and at the direction of City Council, some policy issues have been addressed as well. The signed standards were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission a while back, and at that time, your city staff recognized that the business community had some suggestions on how to better administer the signed standards that the community expects, and so we asked the Planning Commission to continue consideration of this for a few months. Your city staff reached out to your business community in the downtown, in the Chamber of Commerce, brought back a couple of policy changes, along with some of the updates and corrections, and definition changes, things of that nature, within the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you this evening. So beyond some of the corrections and updates that would allow for more efficient administration of the signed standards, the proposed amendment also creates some special standards for your central business district, which would permit the use of one sandwich board sign for each business within this central business district as defined, and along with that, then feather signs would not be permitted. The sandwich boards within central business district would be permitted outright, and be allowed to be placed on the public sidewalk, provided they do not prevent pedestrian, reasonable pedestrian access and accessibility, and they would not require a temporary sign permit. Regarding temporary signs citywide, your Chamber of Commerce suggested perhaps allowing, splitting up the number of times that temporary sign permits could be issued. Instead of the current maximum of four temporary sign permits for 30 days each per business, per year, they suggested, and the ordinance reflects, allowing a maximum of eight temporary sign permits per year for 15 days each. Same result, just some more opportunity, more flexibility. Your Planning Commission considered this application in a public hearing. There were no public comments, so again, a lot, the suggestions for the central business district and for the temporary sign permit period of time were at the suggestion of your local business community. In the end, your Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And this, this covers downtown, west side, citywide, within the city limits, correct?
That's correct. The temporary sign regulations would, the overall sign regulations do. The central business district regulations for sandwich boards is just for that.
Are you volunteering to wear a sandwich port?
Supplement my income.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, we have before us ordinance number 24-05-07, and ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 403, signed regulations of the municipal code by amending signed definitions, sign permitted in District C2 additional regulations and total exemption sections. I'll entertain a motion to take this to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 24-05-07, consideration of amendment to Chapter 403, signed regulations to second reading.
Second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sphere?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, ordinance number 24-05-07, and ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 403, signed regulations of the municipal code by amending signed definitions, signs permitted in District C2 additional regulations and total exemption section. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve ordinance number 24-05-07, consideration of amendment to Chapter 403, signed regulations.
Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Sphere?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Number six on our agenda is the April 2024 Revenue Report and Financial Review. Our wonderful Finance Director, Bonna Floyd, will present details to the council.
Thank you, Mayor, for that compliment. Mayor and council, within your packet for your review, is a detail of the appropriations and revenue for April 2024. All appropriations adhere to the city's purchasing policy, and the detail is as follows. Appropriations on April the 4th for $99,766.45. Appropriations on April 11th of $103,043.54. Appropriations on April the 18th of $197,238.2. Appropriations on April 25th of $248,353.88. And payroll on April the 15th of $402,153.8. And payroll on April the 30th of $368,576.92. For total appropriations for the month of April, $1,419,131.89. And also within your packet was a 35-page revenues report, and on page 35, total revenues received for the month of April, $2,699,852.77.
I'd always like to see that bottom number bigger than the other one.
Me too.
And I think I speak on behalf of the Council, Bonna, we really appreciate your expertise and your effort in our finances, and I know you got a tough job. As I've said before, you put numbers in front of me and I just glaze over, but I appreciate people like you and Stephen Spear.
I appreciate that, thank you. Takes us all.
Okay. Well, that completes our agenda. We will enter into a time of remarks. We'll start with our city manager, Molly McGovern.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring to your attention, we have a few transmittals. There are one, two, three, four letters associated with Eden Village. There is a pre-audit letter from our auditor, just to line out what their responsibilities are, and then a couple of informational pamphlets regarding health risk. are, and then a couple of informational pamphlets regarding health risks associated with hemp-derived intoxicating cannabinoids. Started to say cannibalist.
All right.
So anyway, just to, just to provide some education of how that's working in our community.
When I was on the plane back from Phoenix today, I was, I finally got to review these transmittals, and I was appalled at that last one, the hemp-derived cannabinoids article and, and all of the products that you can buy off Amazon or any local gas station, how much they're targeted to look like candy. And I just, and, and the number of children over the years it has increased exponentially that are harmed by that. We need to be aware of that. Thank you for that article.
It was actually brought to our attention at a safety meeting, so it was really eye-opening, something that we weren't aware of, I believe, but certainly I was not aware of it. So it was good to learn what that meant, just learning more about it.
Thank you, Molly. We'll begin with remarks from city council. We'll start with, to my left, Councilman St. John.
Thank you, sir. As we talked about in the last two meetings now, May is the month of, well, it's also the May of, May is the month of motorcycle safety awareness, and being the token motorcyclist on the group, so I thought I'd bring that up. But that's a two-way street, too. Motorcyclists need to be wearing the right gear, you know, at gap all, all the gear, all the time. And motorists that are in non-motorcycle vehicles need to be aware of motorcycles and once in a while, cut us a break, because, you know, I don't like driving on this shoulder at 70 miles an hour, like you pulled over in the same lane I'm in. But, you know, it's one of those things that, it's just courtesy, you know, just be nice. And I think that just goes across the board. We just need to be nice to each other regardless.
Two wheels or four wheels.
Yeah, doesn't matter, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Reggie.
You're welcome.
We'll move down to the other end of the table. Councilman Rennie?
I have nothing to know.
And Councilman McGovern?
You know, you got to be quite a ways away from Excelsior to be in an area where it's speeding at 70 miles an hour.
But that's the downtown loop.
Regarding the transmittals, the transmittals on Eden Village were well-received. They, they did a good job of presenting their face. Appreciate it.
And remarks by our mayor, Protim Spear?
I know we've already mentioned parks in Rag, but I think the Splash Park is open now, and the outdoor aquatics pool is open now, so again, more things to do, I know, but much appreciated. You know, I get comments all the time from what a gentleman community center is, the Splash Park. Just appreciate all the emphasis.
And I'm going to ask a question before Councilman McGovern does. What's the temperature, Nate?
Eighty-two. Eighty-two is the right answer.
No. Eighty-five is the right answer.
My only remark would be, we have two of our council members going to be out of town, traveling during our next council meeting, and so we've, I'll give you an advance warning. We've moved the next council meeting to the 10th of June to allow one of us to return, and the other one will still be.
Wandering through the hills of Tuscany.
Tuscany. That is all I have, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and I'll actually swing the gavel this time, because I forgot to do that to open the meeting, so I'll hit it twice.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. There we go. Nice gavel.